Good evening, everybody. It is now 5:29, about to be that 5:30 hour. We usually start our meetings with public speakers who are speaking on non-agenda items. We don't have anyone signed up to speak on non-agenda items this evening. So we're going to call to the microphone as we call this meeting to order. Pastor Carlton Cross for our invocation. Pastor Cross is coming to us from First United Methodist Church. Will you please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Almighty God, we come to you today with thankfulness and praise. We thank you for this city. And Lord God, we pray for this city. We pray for the leaders of this city. We pray for our schools and our children. We pray against the violence. We pray that peace might encompass us. Lord, we pray that this city might advance in every way. And that, Lord God, we would give you all the honor and all the glory and all the praise. This we pray in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Pastor Cross, we thank you so much for that most touching prayer. Thank you. At this time, we'll have a roll call by our clerk.
Councilmember Mays.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb, Jr. Councilmember Brown, Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Lockett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown, Senior. Councilmember Shaner.
Here.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Brunson.
Okay. Councilmember Brunson is going to come on soon. Councilmember Holcomb will be absent tonight. I haven't heard from Brown, Senior. So I'm assuming that he's coming. Okay. Each of you should have a copy of the last minutes in your packet.
Moved and approved in minutes.
It's been properly moved in seconds, that we accept the minutes as presented. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved. Want to move into our committee reports. Our first report will come from Ways and Means, Councilmember Mays, with Councilmember Brown, Jr. filling in.
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. There was no business to discuss, so that meeting was adjourned. And that concludes my report.
We're going to ask Councilmember Brown, Jr. to do ordinances and resolutions. Stepping in for Councilmember Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinances and resolutions met just before this meeting. Tonight, we have two ordinances on the agenda for this evening, and we also have four resolutions. Agenda item number one will be read for the second time. Agenda item number two is up for the first reading, but we're going to try to finish that particular agenda item tonight. And the other four items are resolutions to be completed this evening. And that concludes ordinances and resolutions.
Come on.
Okay, Councilmember Brown, Senior is on Zoom.
Oh, just Brunson.
Brunson, okay. Is Brown, Senior coming in? Okay.
He should be.
Okay, moving on to our next committee report. Economic and Community Development, Councilmember Brown, Senior, who is not in yet, so maybe not coming. Public Health and Welfare, Councilmember Frazier.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Welfare will meet on October 12th at 11:00 a.m. It will be in person and via Zoom. Also, I would like to take this time to thank everyone who came out to participate in the reveal of the rendering for the Ward Three Community Park. You will see the easels here in the City Council Chamber, well, and here with us as City Council. And you can, at your leisure after the council meeting, look at it if you did not attend. I also would like to thank, in his absence, Alderman Glenn Brown, Senior, who also decided to partner with me and give some of his funds to the park, so I'm grateful for that. Also, I have participated in advancing inclusive mental health policies in the workplace. And many cities are facing challenges dealing with mental health. And the government, along with city officials, are trying to figure out how we can help on a local level to help our employees while they are working for us, to try to help them and overcome the mental health issues that they might be dealing with. And so I will continue to be on those webinars and whatever information that I get that might be able to help us in the workplace or even for our citizens. I will share that information when we have our city council meetings or either during Public Health and Welfare meetings. Also, I was a part of a state and local official's webinar dealing with nuclear fusion and the future of energy. And that was very interesting. And just to say the least, it was, some of it was a little bit over my head, Mayor, but it's some good information that's about to come down in reference to energy. You know that we are dealing with a lot of climate weather issues and different things like that. So this fusion energy project that they're working on is definitely something that we need to keep our eyes and ears open for. And if anybody would like to have the information in reference to that, I will be happy to share it because it's a lot of information. With that being said, Mayor, I pass it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you for a very thorough report. And we like the research and the attention that you're giving to some of these new issues that are coming forth. So we're critical to our community. Thank you, Councilmember Frazier. Our next report will come from Public Works, Councilmember Shaner. Oh, he's Shaner is here.
Can you hear me? Public Works met on September 26th. During that meeting, Kelly Kennedy from Clean and Beautiful reported that mowing should be wrapping up. The Sweet Potato Festival will be held at Heston Stadium from, on September 27th, no, October 27th. Through October the 3rd, no, was that this weekend?
I think it was this, it was this weekend, it was Saturday. It was this Saturday, yes.
Threw me off there. But yeah, it was this past weekend. The Sweet Potato Festival was held at Heston Stadium. Family Church will have their cleanup weekend on October the 7th. On the 26th of October, the Fall Shredd event will be held at Saracen Landing from 10 until 2:00. And on October the 6th, Cleanup Day at Ward Three Community Park.
Yes, thank you. Because I was hoping you would say it because I forgot to say it.
Larissa from the Aquatic Center, she reported that they're having an inspector come out and look at their AC system. And also that UAPB is now a sponsor at the Aquatic Center. Ronnie from the Street Department reported that they were patching on Old Warren Road and other places. They're also mowing, sweeping, cleaning ditches in the Fourth Ward and striping on market between East Harding and Martha Mitchell. Ms. Reedus from Parson Rec reported that they are having computer literacy classes that will be held at the Pine Bluff Community Center, and those will be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The classes start, started on September the 26th at 9:00 a.m. And that address is 1,000 South Ash Street. several leagues for this fall. They're starting a kickball league, starting, it started on September the 24th at 3:00. Presently, there are five teams. Games are Sundays, games are, games Sundays are played on Sundays at 3:00. There's a golf clinic for ladies in Harbor Oaks on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 4:00 to 5:00, age 12 to 18, and 5:30 to 6:30, age 18 and older. There is a basketball league for boys and girls. Entrance letter will go out October the 10th, starting date November the 11th, ages 12 to 18 years old. Tennis instruction on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturday mornings, 5:30 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Tennis tournament Friday, 5:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m., Sunday, 6:00, 8:00 a.m. Sunday, I'm sorry, Saturday, 8:00 a.m., Sunday, 8:00 a.m. Movies in the Park will be on October the 14th. Movie starts at 7:00 p.m. Let's see, there will be soccer invitation announcement on October the 5th, and pickleball courts opening on October the 15th. I believe that's it. Is that at Central Park?
Yes, I believe so. Ms. Reedus, pickleball at Central Park? Okay, it's at the tennis park, Bloom Park.
All right. And I think that concludes my report.
Councilmember, what Movies in the Park, which, is that reasonable?
Yes. Is that right, Ms. Reedus?
That was the question that I had written down. Is that the end of your report?
That's on October the 14th and starts at 7:00 p.m.
October 14th. Ms. Reedus, do the citizens need to bring lawn chairs? Or would there be bleachers for that? It's drive-in. Oh, it's a drive-in movie. Okay, very good. Okay. Okay, very good.
Oh, nice. Very nice.
That is a very robust schedule of activities, and we're pleased to hear that. That's what we've wanted for quite some time for our citizens in this community, whether it be events and things for them to participate in. So we applaud you for that. The only thing I, you may have said that I, I'm not sure that I heard, was fall ball. Are we going to be able to get fall ball this, going this fall?
Right now, we do not have fall ball. We have had two contacts and callers about going to softball in the park.
Okay.
They have not come through yet.
Very good. All right, very good. Good job. Thank you for such a good report, Councilmember Shaner.
Yes, Mayor.
Let's back up, if we will, to Economic and Community Development, Councilmember.
I have no report, Mayor.
Thank you.
You just want to hear my voice, right?
Thank you. Didn't want to overlook anybody. Development and Planning, Councilmember Lockett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Development and Planning Committee has not met since our last meeting, and we shall meet tomorrow at 1:00 in the City Council Chambers and via Zoom. That concludes my report.
1:00 p.m. tomorrow, Tuesday. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lockett. Traffic and Aviation, Councilmember Brunson.
Hello, Mayor, thanks. I don't have, Traffic and Aviation has not met since our last meeting, but I did want to recognize that we participated in J.C. Corbin Day at the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff on last week, where the resolution that went through Traffic and Aviation was presented to the university as also, it was also presented to the family of J.C. Corbin. It was a big deal on campus. And that resolution will be housed in the museum on the campus of the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. So I wanted to thank my committee and also thank our Street Department for putting the street topper on the street that was designated for the, for J.C. Corbin. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And that was a very, very nice program. We want to thank you, Councilmember Lockett, for your assistance with getting those signs made. And there will be one on display along with the frame resolution in the museum at UAPB. So we did drop that off there. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Brunson. Administration Committee report coming from Councilmember Holcomb will be passed since he's not here. Moving on to Public Safety, Councilmember Brown, Jr.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety has not met since the last council meeting, but we will have a meeting on Wednesday, October 4th, 1:30 p.m. in the council chambers, and we will have Zoom available. Is that okay? Will we have Zoom available? Okay. So we'll have Zoom available as well.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Before we go into our proposed ordinances and resolutions, I'm going to read a couple of announcements. One of those announcements is the Sixth and Main Street Vendor Finalist and Top-Off Ceremony will take place on October 3rd. That's at the new construction work that's taking place at Sixth and Main, right in front of the library. This will take place on October 3rd, which is tomorrow, at 12:00 noon. So everybody who can be there at Sixth and Main for that top-off program, we would appreciate your attendance. On Thursday of this week, which is the anniversary of the death of Detective Kevin Collins, we'll have an introduction to the Detective Kevin Collins Center. The center is still a work in progress, but we are at a state where we would like for the public to come in and see where we are with the development of that center. That's going to take place, as I said, Thursday, the 5th, from 11:30 till 12:00. The memorial ceremony and soft opening will be showcasing the Pine Bluff Police Training Center and the new City Council Center, along with some other spaces that you'll be able to walk through. I have a person in the audience today. I know a lot of you have seen the work. We did pass a resolution for us to go into contract with Harness Roofing and Waterproofing. And that's extensive work. It's been underway for better than a month, and the work is going to continue for more than a month. We're waterproofing the side of the building, the old library side of the building, making sure that the leaking that has been coming from the flower beds and the drain areas is waterproof so that we can have secure spaces, so we won't get our roofs all messed up. So we have with us Mr. Williams, Grant Williams, from Harness Waterproofing, and he wants to talk to you all a bit about that. Some of you had asked questions about it, so I thought it was good to have him in just to talk to you about the work that's being done on the convention center, not the convention center, but the, we'll call it the Collins Center. And it's going to go around if we're pleased with.
Sure. Good evening. Glad, glad to be here. Thank you, Mayor. Here, happy to answer any questions. Really is what we're doing on that side of the building where all the new construction's going on inside, is waterproofing every front thing from the flower bed to the building itself, which is an extensive process of taking out old caulking, taking up old coatings that were there for waterproofing, you know, in the last 20 years or longer, patching all the loose concrete that over time has frozen and busted and different things have come up. We're relaying all that. And then we'll go over that whole deck on that south side of the building with a three-process epoxy coating. It's, it's actually a traffic coating. It's coating that we use on parking decks all over this part of the country, from Bank of the Ozarks up in Little Rock to the JW Marriott in New Orleans, we use this product, coating all of these parking decks. And so it's high traffic. It's for vehicles. And so that just gives you an idea of how that's going to last, just with foot traffic on it. All of our people are, everybody there that's on this particular job are 10 and 11-year employees with Harness Roofing, doing nothing but waterproofing.
One of the things I think is important for us to note is the flower beds that were going around that building on that full side, there were crepe myrtles out there. And if you look at the size of the crepe myrtle from the top, the root was just as big and had cracked that concrete up. So we, we did remove all the crepe myrtle bushes. And when we go back in with new plantings, we're going to go with plants that are not as invasive, with the root system that's not as invasive as, as what was there. But we'll still do something that's going to be appealing and still look nice to showcase our building. Any questions for Mr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Glenn Brown, Jr.?
What is the lifespan, so when you seal it, does it, you know, on average, is it 15 years, 20 years?
All of these products are, should give you a robust 15-year and really a 20-year. You should have very little issues with anything these guys are doing in this project 20 years, before a 20-year period. And then it would be, you know, there'd be some caulking, caulking of some different joints that just over that period of time, that caulk just fails. Due to weather, due to sun, it dissipates, and you go in and clean that stuff out and redo. That deck coating with lack of traffic, you know, I don't see you doing anything with that in 20 years. I think it'll be, it'll still be there with you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. How long have you all been in business doing this?
As far as roofing, it's a, we're a 45-year company, Arkansas company. Probably have grown to about 450 employees company-wide with nine branches. Waterproofing, specialized waterproofing like we're doing right now, probably about 15 years. My, my branch manager, my direct boss, is 62, and he's been, his father was a waterproofer here in Arkansas. He's taught me everything I know, but he's, he's worked for Dow developing products that we're using on your building. So he's certainly, he knows every in and out from the oldest church restoration to doing what we're doing here, to new construction waterproofing. He's just, he's very skilled and brings a bunch of, brings a bunch of knowledge with him and teaches everybody what he's doing.
So for the council, we did get an assessment of the entire building. You know, we have three phases there. If we did this building and then the City Hall building, which would be, and then the police fire building, that would be the three buildings. But we're going to see how this one goes, and then we'll move around to the others because they all have issues. So we want to thank him. And we thank you for providing this packet of information. This is more information that you all can learn about what they do and the product that they're using. So thank you for being with us tonight.
You bet. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And thank for the work that you're doing for our city.
You bet. Thank you. Talking to my guys this evening, we're probably three and a half weeks, and they'll be done. So four weeks tops, and we'll be, we'll be gone, so.
Thank you. I like the fact that you're not rushing.
Right.
Because you've been here for a while, and you still have about a month to stay here.
Right. We've got a couple, a couple of extra things we're going to throw in. There's some of your roof up there, if you notice where there's some stuff hanging down, what I'd call stalactite. We're going to get up there and coat that portion to keep that water from getting into that concrete. That's just an extra, we're going to, just, just because it needs to be done, and it will preserve what we're doing and preserve that as well. But yeah, they're moving along good. Yeah, everything's really good.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we go, can I make a comment?
Councilmember Frazier, yes?
I just wanted to say, I thank Shaner for bringing up October 6th because I forgot. And I was like, dang, I don't want to interrupt him, but then he brought it up, so I was glad because I remember it was addressed in his meeting too. But October 6th is, is a cleanup that we're doing at Ward Three Park. However, it's also United Way Day of Caring. So if you have participated in the past with the United Way Day of Caring, please sign up for it because you can help us. They decided to graciously accept our project as their Day of Caring project, so it's going to be over 150 to 200 people rotating out of that park, helping us to clear out all of the garbage and stuff that's inside of some of those rooms and stuff. And I just really am excited about it, and I thank everybody for helping us with this project. It's not something that I could have done alone, so I'm thankful. And again, now that Alderman Brown, Senior is here, I want to officially say it while he's here. I said it when he wasn't here. Thank you for also contributing some of your funds to help us with this project.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
Can I make a comment also?
Yeah.
And that is, how much in the, how much is in that building that you got to have?
Trust me, there's some stuff up in there.
Well, we have to borrow some of the city's trucks or city?
Well, we got, we got dumpsters coming. We have some, some people, this, this is why I really want to name it a community park, not nobody else's name, because the community is literally coming together and helping us free with, we got dumpsters, we got someone that's going to bush hog, we got people that's going to hit the fences, we got wheelbarrows coming, we got, I mean, everything. I mean, they are really... coming, we got, I mean, everything. I mean, they are really rallying around, and I'm saying everybody is coming together, and I have not, only concerns that I have heard was maintaining the park, which we already got that covered. Thank you, thank you, to the community again, and then about the safety. And again, we're going to have the police, have a space there for the police to be there whenever they want, 24/7 if they want. So I'm grateful, so.
And remember to reach out to every renewal, because they have dumpsters.
Mm-hmm. Well, Kendra is the one that's actually going to help me with the dumpsters.
All right. Very good. Very good. Thank you for that. Moving into proposed ordinances and resolutions, Councilmember Brown Jr.
All right. Agenda item number one, we have an ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. It's up for the second reading.
An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number two, it's an ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with municipal vehicle program, municipal vehicle program through the Arkansas Municipal League and declaring an emergency for the first reading.
Whereas First Arkansas Insurance has provided insurance coverage to the Pine Bluff Transit for personal injuries that may be incurred by passengers, and whereas First Arkansas Insurance recently increased its premium by approximately $130,000 annually, and whereas Pine Bluff Transit desires to obtain insurance with the Municipal League Program through the Arkansas Municipal League to cover Pine Bluff Transit passengers, and whereas insurance through the municipal vehicle program is significantly less than the coverage offered through First Arkansas Insurance Company, insurance offered by municipal vehicle program is approximately $9,000 annually, and whereas under the circumstances, competitive bidding to secure alternate insurance for Pine Bluff Transit passengers would be inefficient and impractical, now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the council finds that requiring competitive bidding to secure insurance to cover personal injuries for passengers who travel on Pine Bluff Transit Vehicles would be inefficient and impractical. Section 2, that the mayor or her designee is authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with the municipal vehicle program through the Arkansas Municipal League at the amount of approximately $9,000 annually. Section 3, because personal injury insurance coverage is essential, important to public health, welfare, and safety for the Pine Bluff Transit passengers, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force of effect upon its passage.
Move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember May?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockum? Councilmember Brown Jr.?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Sr.?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with municipal vehicle program through the Arkansas Municipal League and declaring an emergency.
Move to further suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember May?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockum? Councilmember Brown Jr.?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Sr.?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with municipal vehicle program through the Arkansas Municipal League and declaring an emergency.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that an ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with municipal vehicle program through the Arkansas Municipal League and declaring an emergency be approved. The floor is open for discussion.
I would like to be a co-signer.
Councilmember Frazier?
I'd just like to be a co-signer on it.
Co-signer, co-sponsor, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of this ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance approved.
Do we need to adopt the emergency clause?
Oh, we need to.
Adopt the emergency clause?
Yes, adopt the emergency clause.
Move to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we adopt the emergency clause. Roll call, please.
Councilmember May?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockum? Councilmember Brown Jr.?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Sr.?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
This is one of those situations like that one at the, when we transferred our property insurance over to the municipal league because of the rate, and this one just went up all of a sudden from where it was to 130, and we called the municipal league to see if they could cover our transit system, and they said $9,000 a year. And we made sure that we checked to make sure everything was going to be covered, passengers, liability, and all. And so that was the best deal.
Great savings.
Yeah.
All right. Agenda item number three, we have a resolution authorizing the transfer of equipment to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Public Library.
Whereas the city clerk's office has a large book scanner it no longer needs, and whereas the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library System has used for the scanner and requests it to be transferred to its possession, and whereas the library system is a related public entity and surplus equipment may be transferred to it as an efficient use of public resources, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the city clerk is authorized to transfer to the possession of the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library System one large book scanner in her possession for the use of the library system. A bill of sale is authorized to effect the transfer if necessary. The scanner will be removed from the list of equipment held by the city clerk's office once transferred.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that a resolution authorizing the transfer of equipment to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Public Library be approved. The floor is open for discussion. Any questions?
I guess the only question I just have is, so what were we using it for at first?
The large book, old historical, big red books.
Oh, okay.
They're all now scanned in, and so we have those marketed in our system.
Okay.
And so it's taken up too much space within the clerk's office.
Okay.
Mr. Roberts? As I told you before, you know, sometime back, I was responsible for them getting that machine. I also was responsible for the person that was hired to work that machine, and I also was responsible for getting that person to be a permanent worker here. But you said they have done the work, and it's not good in your office now.
That size machine is not. We will be getting another book scanner, but that size is no longer of use, and it's just best to give it to the public library who has the larger books than the clerk's office.
I got you. I'm not mad at you.
But we have the hard copy books stored.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
Agenda item number four, it's a resolution authorizing a contract with Woods Group Architects for professional services regarding the cultural district.
Whereas there is need for the assistance of professional architectural services to advance the downtown cultural district, and whereas after seeking proposals from interested vendors to perform the necessary work, the firm of Woods Group Architects submitted the best possible qualified proposal to do the work, and a contract should be executed with the firm, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized to execute a contract with Woods Group Architects to provide professional architectural services respecting the cultural district project for a consideration not to exceed $65,000 and on other terms and conditions which are standard in the field for work of this nature.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that a resolution authorizing a contract with Woods Group Architects for professional services regarding the cultural district be approved. The floor is open for questions. I do have a question, Mr. Matthews. Do we have any idea of the scope of work this $65,000, I mean, it's not to exceed $65,000, but what scope of work would that cover?
Afternoon, Mayor, City Council. The $65,000 is based on appropriation that was given, the 1.5 million dollars of that, we're expected to go towards construction. What will happen is the construction will be done in phases. So regardless to what phase, the first phase may be $300,000. So it will be based on whatever phase, it will be up to that million dollars. If it's 300,000, it's 6% of the 300,000 for the first phase. Second phase, 300,000. It's still at the 6% mark until we kind of get a grip on the whole how much we'll do in that first phase. But the $65,000 covers a million dollars worth of architectural services.
Okay, if we get, but no more than that. Okay, I understand.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
Agenda item number five, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Wagner General Contractors for work regarding the Harbor Oaks Clubhouse.
Whereas the city advertised for interested vendors to perform construction work on the clubhouse at the Harbor Oaks Golf Course, and whereas the firm of Wagner General Contractors submitted the lowest, most responsible bid, and the contract should be signed with this firm, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized to sign an agreement with Wagner General Contractors to perform work on the Harbor Oaks Golf Course clubhouse for a consideration of $374,400, and consistent with the city's specifications, the vendor's bid submission, and other terms and conditions standard in the field for work of this nature.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that a resolution authorizing an agreement with Wagner General Contractors for work regarding the Harbor Oaks Clubhouse be approved. The floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
Agenda item number six, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of financial contributions for renovation and maintenance of the Ward 3 Community Park, and providing that the contributions be set aside and restricted for these purposes.
Whereas many residents have indicated a desire to make a financial contribution to the renovation and maintenance of the Ward 3 Community Park, and whereas the park desire, the city desires to encourage residents to support local parks and recreation facilities via financial contribution, and agrees that the contributions should be set aside and restricted to use for the renovation and maintenance of the park facility, and whereas Ms. Louise Tyler Tubbs has made generous contribution for this purpose, which should be accepted, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section 1, that the contribution of Louise, Louis, Louise Tyler Tubbs in the amount of $250, made for the purpose of defraying the cost of renovation and maintenance of the Ward 3 Community Park is accepted and should be set aside or restricted for use consistent with these purposes. Section 2, the city will accept the financial contributions dedicated to the renovation and maintenance of the Ward 3 Community Park, and pledges that the contributions will be restricted to use as consistent with these purposes. Section 3, the finance department will maintain separate accounting for the contributions. If requested, a letter acknowledging the contribution may be provided to the donor.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that a resolution authorizing the acceptance of financial contributions for renovation and maintenance of the Ward 3 Community Park, and providing that the contributions be set aside and restricted for these purposes be approved. The floor is open for our discussion. Councilmember Frazier?
We have Ms. Louise Tyler here, Tubbs, really Tisdale. I would like for her to stand and be recognized. She, soon as I told her what we were trying to do and some of the things that we wanted to get in the facility, she just wrote out a check. And so I am grateful to her, and she led the charge, and today I got calls from other people who are ready to write the check. So I just wanted to say thank you publicly for helping us to create a beloved park in Ward 3.
Ms. Tubbs, would you like to have words of expression as to why you're so excited and willing to donate?
Yes, thank you. You know, I've been a resident of Pine Bluff for many, many years. And when I was a child, this was such a beautiful city. And then when I came back from living in California for over 50 years, and when I came back, I was so disappointed, and I just cried and prayed, and asked the Lord to do something special for Pine Bluff, restore it. And so naturally, I would be one of the first givers. So whatever is going on, you can rest assured that we are praying, that you're able to do whatever needs to be done, and that God provides the finances for the work to be done. It might seem slow, but we well on our way. So I thank you for the opportunity to be able to give. So whatever Councilwoman Lynette, you know, embarks upon, we plan to be with, my husband and I, we're standing together. She happened to be our pastor. So whatever is going on, we're going to work it out together.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give her another round of applause. Thank you so much. We love the beautiful spirit of those who are willing to embrace this community with such support. Councilmember Brown Sr.
Thank you, Mayor. On last week, was that last week we met, or week before last?
Last week.
I did donate a portion of the money that was set aside for each Alderman to this project. And I looked around at that project, and I know it's going to take a lot of money to do it, but you got to get started first. And once you get started, then things start to happen. I'm hoping that it'll work like that. So I asked the mayor, can we like pro-rate our money? And she said, well, she didn't know whether the money would be there every year. But I don't see, now we almost in budget time, and I don't see anything wrong with me donating the same amount of my money next year into this project. So one way or the other, maybe I have to make another commitment after January 1. But right now, I'm committing the same amount I did this year for next year's project.
Amen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And again, I say, if the discretionary funds are there.
You didn't say that.
You did say that.
That's not a promise that it will be there, but if the budget can handle it, it will be there. So I don't, I don't make promises that we may not be able to keep. Now, Joe, I have a question for you. This resolution is authorizing the acceptance of a financial contribution from contributions. So this is one contribution.
This is one, right?
So if other citizens step forward and make contributions, will this resolution cover any and all contributions that come to this park? That's what I'm hoping it will do. Okay, very good.
Yes.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Brown, when you get ready to make your personal contribution, it's covered.
I hear you.
If there are no more questions or if there are no more comments in reference to this resolution, let's vote. All in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
May I move to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we are adjoint. We have one person speaking on a non-agenda item, and that's Mr. Julius Leever. Mr. Leever, you have three minutes, and the clock has already started ticking. Thank you.
You have a minute and a half. Just kidding.
... for 400, 500 years. That's the point. I believe in transparency of government, because I believe that at first, it was morality that helped black people, then it was education, and then the word became networking. And now it's a cult mentality, where people in power, even though they are black, they do the same thing that was done to the masses as the whites did many years ago. So, in essence, I follow FOIs. I follow FOIs with Larry Matthews and the Community Development when they got $1,200,000. I asked for rental assistance, it was not given a dollar, even though I had zero income. What happened to the money? I followed five FOIs, which Larry Matthews never responded to. Lori Walker responded to one I made about a shelter. I made a FOI request to Janice Roberts not too long ago, asking her to provide to me a copy of checks that was paid to board up the hotel. asking her to provide to me a copy of checks that was paid to board up the hotel that Urban Renewal used 1 million dollars of the people's taxes to buy a n, a hotel in great disrepair, and then had to pay to board it up, and at this point, I don't know what the plans are, so I made a FOI for the check that was paid to board it up, and not the materials, just the labor, I got an invoice that says, "Do not send check, we'll pick up," well, who picked the check up? Who was it written to, and what was the amount? Now, years ago, I filed FOIs in the finance department, and every time I would go to the finance department, the gentleman would run to the city attorney's office, one while you had to file a FOI in the city attorney's office, so in this case, Janice Roberts, who I love dearly, she knows I do, she says, "It's in the basement, and I'm not gonna send nobody down there to get it," this check was written in 2022, why is Janice Roberts refusing to send someone to the basement to get that check? Is it because the city attorney's office says, "Don't do it," is it because of someone else? Ask the question, Mr. Glenn Brown Jr., are you still a member of Go For It?
Am I a member of Go For It? No, sir.
Are you on the board of Go For It?
No, sir.
Mayor, are you on the board of Go For It?
I'm not on the board, no.
Are you a member of Go For It?
I'm on the public-private review committee, we just review projects.
Okay, I heard you say a few moments ago, "Send a dumpster out to help Lynette," that was also said about religious property on Maiden Hardin, send a dumpster out to get the religious property, I don't know who said it, but it was said, and it was done. Again, I am, I gave each of you all a copy of the letter, of the FOI, not the letter, but the FOI, I'm filing again with Janice Roberts, Julius Leever, Janice Roberts, city clerk, copy of all checks made to, to board up hotels at Filth and Walnut, years 2022, 2023, for building materials and labor, and I'm asking you all to make sure Janice Roberts gets that, uh, FOI, and I'll wait to see if I receive information.
Mr. Leever, may I respond to your inquiries?
Yes.
It was stated to you that the city clerk office workload is extensive at this point in time, and at this point in time, that I do not have one available to go to the basement and retrieve a front copy of the invoice in which you got.
Okay, let me say this to you.
Let me finish, please.
Sure, sure.
The checks do not return to the city clerk's office, we gave you a copy of more than what the check would have presented to you, we gave you the vendor's name, the amount of the check, the check number, and the, um, the, uh, the amount of the check.
Yes, ma'am.
And so therefore, you have exceeded the amount of information given to you from the, uh, request that you offer, we do not get the checks back in return, only thing you're going to get is what you've received is that front copy of the invoice that shows the amount, that's the only thing you would be able to get from the clerk's office.
Okay.
I don't have the check per se.
One of the reasons why I'm going about it this way is because not too long ago, you all were destroying checks, old checks, very old checks.
Unwritten checks, unwritten, we destroyed unwritten old checks that are no longer in use, or the banking, uh, facilities are no longer existing.
So that means that the check is still available in the basement?
No, sir.
And this check is not in the basement, it's written in 2022, it's not, I was told that a check in 2000...
We do not retain the physical check, a copy of the physical check, those are retained in the bank.
Well, let me say this to you, once before I said, "Who's Urban Renewal, who owns the property?" Maurice Taggart wants you to let Mr. Leever come to the meeting, no one invited me, I saw Mr. Taggart, we smiled at each other, $600,000 is missing, the company that the check was written to does not have a license in the city collector's office, so do you see why I am concerned? I'm not ashamed to be a public servant, I love young people, and this is a young people's city, we're using it, we're in the last 30 years of our life, 10, 40, 20, some might have days, weeks, months, I might, I got attacked with toothpick bulls on Friday, Saturday morning by St. Paul Church.
I understand what you're saying, but you're asking for a copy of the check that was written, we do not have a copy of the check.
Who does?
The bank, I just told you that.
Can you get a copy of the check?
You will have to pay for that, we can request...
Do you think I mind paying for a check? Again, I'll say this to you, the vendor...
Mr. Leever?
Yes, I just told you, Mr. Brown, the vendor does not exist in the city collector's office as a licensed vendor.
Understood, but her retrieving that check from the bank is not gonna change whatever your statement is.
It says, "Do not send check, we'll pick up," how do you know who picked the check up? How do you know who signed the check?
We verify when an individual come in to...
$600,000 was not verified, so I'm just asking for a little assistance.
May I answer your question?
Of course.
When an individual come in to pick up a check, they have to verify who they are, they would have to present identification, then they sign the log of the check and the check number, that's how we know who's picking up the checks, we verify that, sir.
So the person who the check is written, always has to pick it up?
No, he doesn't always have to, but if they request to pick up, then they come in, the vendor has to request to pick up.
Let, let me share this with you, is, is our conversation is ongoing, I don't think it needs to be, I just think that the city of Pine Bluff should keep a copy of every check written, and it should be scanned and kept in a computer base where anytime it, the, any one of you all could see what check was written and what for amount, I mean, it's just too many things can go wrong, and evidently, $600,000 went wrong, so is it improper for a caring, loving, dedicated person who loves the future of this city to ask to see a copy of the check, if the vendor is not a licensed person in the city of Pine Bluff? I think it's reasonable, and I'm asking, I gave the city attorney, I gave each city councilman, a FOI, I think I'm entitled to see a check if at all possible, and I'm asking you all to see if you can...
You actually see the front cover of the check, Mr.?
I don't, I, I didn't receive nothing but a statement of how much money that was spent, and it was not even thorough, for example, for example, for example.
And the invoice that was attached to it.
For example, there was a...
Mr. Leever?
There was a theft, there was a theft at the hotel, did you know that?
Mr. Leever?
Okay, do, do you know that some of the lumber that supposedly was used was stolen? And do you know it was one year after the fact that the hotel was burnt, was, was boarded? I'm just saying...
So would a copy of that check make a difference with you?
Yes.
We don't know, I mean, because there was something stolen.
Okay, okay, I guess what you're saying, I, I say this once.
Mr. Leever, excuse me, I'm going to recommend that you continue this conversation with Ms. Roberts during business hours.
Okay, well, let me say this, Mayor, am I entitled to see the copy of the check? I'm asking the mayor.
Are you saying the front?
The city clerk has told you that...
I'm saying, I'm saying, who the check...
You, are you asking for the front and back of the check?
I'm just asking for who the check, I wanna see the check, who's writ, who's written to.
Mr. Leever, you've got that.
I got an invoice.
That's the front copy that's printed from the check.
No, no, a check to, to so-and-so, so-and-so, what do I mean?
As to who it was written to.
I mean, we all write, we all written checks, right? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Leever?
Yes?
Time, time is passing, but I think you're right with our freedom of information, the mayor suggested that you get with Ms. Roberts, I think you should get what you're asking for, that's what I think.
Okay, thank you, thank you, then.
Yeah, that's what he got. That's what he has, I don't, I don't know what else to give him.